All good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, February 10th Town of Ladensburg Council Work Session. We're now called to order. At this time, we will proceed with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
That's a move.
Moved by Councilmember Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any corrections or additions to the agenda before we take a vote? Want to make sure, because I know we have a couple of council members online. Okay, seeing no hands, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The agenda is approved for tonight's work session. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the work session minutes for Monday, January 13, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
That's a move.
Moved by Councilmember Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any corrections or amendments to the minutes for the last meeting? I did just notice two small typos, so Madam Clerk, I can give those over to you at the end of this meeting, but it was just two small things. But other than that, I think we're okay. I'm looking for the council members online. Councilmember Blunt, any corrections to the minutes? Okay, all right. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. The meeting minutes are approved. We now will proceed into financial business on tonight's agenda, beginning with item A, which is the approval and adoption of FY 2024 audit. At this time, we'll turn it over to Treasurer Tenelli to kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have online Ms. Eva Webb, who is with our auditing firm, and I asked her to go ahead and present the audit, spend a few minutes walking through the highlights, and answer any questions the Mayor and Council might have. So Eva, I'm going to turn this over to you, and the screen's already shared.
Yep, perfect. So as Vito mentioned, we did the audit for the town for the year ended June 30, 2024. So I'm going to walk you through to a very high level the results of the audit. So the first one I always like to stop is the independent auditor's report. Essentially, this is what the town pays us for. So as a reminder, down here, management is responsible for the financial statements. All we do as auditors is express an opinion on those financial statements. So if you go... All right, if you go back up, second paragraph, you'll see, "In our... In the financial statements referred to a present fairly in all material respects." It would mean the town received a clean, unmodified opinion for fiscal year '24, which is the best opinion that you can get. You'll see at the very bottom of the report, it's not dated yet. So you, as Mayor and Council, you have to review and approve audit, and then once we do that, that's when we will state everything. So let's jump into the numbers. Exhibit A1 is the statement of net position. And so if you guys are in a for-profit, it would be your balance sheet. So essentially, what it does is it lists all of the assets and all of the liabilities of the town. So you'll see about halfway down, our total assets for the town at June 30, 2024, $10.3 million. And if you look up above, these first four rows are your cash and cash equivalents and your investments. And they total a little over $6.2 million. And then the other largest piece of your assets, of course, are your capital assets, which is your land and your buildings, your equipment, your vehicles. So that $3.2 million is net of depreciation. You also have some preferred outflows of resources, about $1.00, almost $1.5 million. And then on the other side here are liabilities, which all towns and organizations have at any point in time, about $4.4 million. Largest piece of that is your long-term liabilities, which relate to your leases and your pension liability. You also have some preferred inflows of resources. So what that means is you've received the cash, but you haven't actually earned the revenue yet. So this is mostly your unearned ARPA funds at the end of fiscal year '24, a little over $1.3 million. If you take all of your assets and subtract all of your liabilities, the difference is what's known as your net position. And so some of it cannot be spent, right? Our capital assets are not in liquid form, so they're segregated separately. Then you also have some restricted funds at the end of the year. That's your highway user revenues that can really only be spent for that purpose. The general reserve or unrestricted funds at the end of last year, a little under $0.3 million. The next statement is probably the most important statement for the town, exhibit A2. What it does is it's all of the expenses that the town incurred last year, and it totaled $11 million. And it breaks it down by category, so you have several different activities, right? You have your general government activities, your public safety, which includes your police force, work, and then some interest that'll then get allocated. And what it does, it shows how you funded those expenses. So it has a column here for program service charges for services. These would be fees that are charged the residents, and that totaled a little over $1.00, almost $1.5 million. You also know as a town, you do get funding, grants and contributions, mostly grants for various projects. That was about $2.1 million last year. And so that shows you that you had a deficit of about $7.4 million. And so what local governments can do is they can assess taxes. Down here at the bottom, you have your state fare taxes that were collected last year, about $674,000, and your property taxes of a little over $5.1 million. Last year was also a really good year for investments and for money market accounts. So the town did earn about $442,000 of interest. And then just some other miscellaneous revenue of about $204. So your general revenues last year were $6.4 million. So you didn't quite cover your expenses in fiscal year '24, right? You had a change in net position of about $988,000. My knowledge, after reviewing everything, it appeared that you knew you were going to utilize your fund balance or your reserves last year. So your ending net position, that's $6,790,000. The next two pages, exhibit A3 and A4, are your fund-level financial statements. So they only include items that are currently available and not... They don't have anything that's a long-term asset or liability. So there's no debt on these statements, and there's no capital assets. These statements are really just included so you can kind of see in the near term how much money you have to operate. And so you'll see the bonuses are slightly different, right? Our assets are not $1 million, they're $7 million, because we don't have those capital assets included. And your liabilities are much, much less, because you don't have them recorded on the fund level. But we're not going to talk too much about the statement, because I want to look at it when we look at budget in just a minute, and exhibit B1. So exhibit A6, if you need some... I'll be fall asleep tonight, go ahead and read them. But essentially, the notes to the financial statements only include information about some of the numbers on the financial statements. So they provide a little bit more background and a little bit more detail about those numbers. Note 1 and note 2 really talk about the accounting policies the town uses. So really, I didn't have any to present to you this evening. If you, you know, had a question about a number on one of the statements, there would be a note in the back to kind of talk about where it came from. So let's scroll down to exhibit B1. This is the budget versus actual, which you, as the town, use on a recurring basis to kind of track how you're doing. So this is also the final... There are three columns. We have the original budget, the final budget, and the actual amounts. So I like to start by looking at sort of totals and then looking at anything that kind of went over or under. So your total revenue budgeted last year for the final was a little over $11 million. And the town recognized a little over $2... I'm sorry, $10 million. So there was a difference of about $1 million. And if you look above, it's mainly in this grant revenue category. I think you guys were anticipating you were going to spend more of the ARPA funds than was actually spent last year. And then the other side are the expenses. For the same... If we look at the total budget last year in expenses, it was $12.2 million. And your actual expenditures were $11.7 million. So you overestimated your expenses by about $532,000. And a lot of that had to begin with ARPA funds not being expended. And then there were some other significant variance while down here in the grants. I think you were expecting some subjects that maybe didn't come through with them last year. You are in the Maryland State Retirement Plan, and so as part of that, you have to include a couple additional schedules, these exhibit B3 and B4. So essentially, it's showing whether or not you're funded or if you are not fully funded. That's kind of some of these percentages. The one on the next page is exhibit B4. It shows that the date required for contribution last year to the various employees' retirement plan of $425,000. The town made a contribution last year. Hopefully, I should say it's fully funded. And this is a 10-year schedule, though every year the town has funded its required amount. The last two pages are a second report. Because you are thinking there's ARPA funds, we had to do a yellow book audit. It's just a little bit higher level, and it talks about the results here. You got a clean, unmodified opinion for that as well. Actually, I'm to my seven minutes. Sorry about that. Are there any questions?
Ms. Webb, thank you for that overview. I'll turn it over to the Council to start with any questions. Councilmember Blunt and McBride, I'll come to you both since you're online first to see if you have any questions. Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay. Councilmember McBride?
Well, I don't have any either at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown, any questions or comments about the audit?
Thanks, Mayor. No, I don't really have any questions. I just want to, you know, continue to look at it a little bit more, digest it. But it looks... It looks to be pretty good. But no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon, any comments or questions regarding the audit?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am just curious about why was the proposed... The personal property tax was lower than the budget amount? Was this is because... Was this is because of... Was it that businesses were closing? Or anything to do with the economy activity?
So Vito, I think that's probably a question for you, because it goes towards the mother of the audit that was prepared.
Yeah, the previous years, it was over. And then sometimes there's a timing difference, because the businesses don't always file the tax returns. They file for extensions, and like this year, we're getting revenues from like FY '23 and FY '24. So it's a timing issue a lot of times, how many businesses actually filed by the April 15th and June 15th deadlines versus extending out into September. So it's been going like this, but the last two years, it's been higher than budget. And the one time we kept the budget at the usual amount, it came in lower than budget. So we're going to budget a little bit more conservatively again this year on it.
And then include the... The bond bill revenue as well?
No.
No, we didn't have any bond bill revenue in FY '24 for this budget.
Thank you. Yeah, that's correct. We'll do it all this year.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for the questions, Councilmember Dixon. And I think the real takeaway here is just looking at pages 47 and 48 in particular, and noting that there were no deficiencies in our internal controls and that we had a clean audit once again, which is definitely something that the town should be proud of. That's not the case for every single municipality. And I think we owe a huge debt of gratitude to our staff for keeping meticulous financial records and also just making sure that you're following our internal processes. And Vito, I know it takes a lot to go through the auditing process, pulling the documents between you and Tina and others supporting you. So appreciate your efforts working with Ms. Webb and her firm to ensure all the necessary documentation was there for her benefit so that they could do their job, which was to really examine our financial records.
And all at times, it wasn't for a clean opinion, so it's... Don't mind doing it.
Appreciate that. Ms. Webb, thank you for joining us tonight and for taking the time to walk through the report. And this is on the agenda for the council meeting at 7:00 PM so that we can formally adopt the FY 2024. We don't have to formally... Okay, so... I don't believe so. I mean, Vito, if you want to talk us through it at a high level, and then we can go ahead and vote. I understand we need to do that so that the final letter, the report, can be completed with today's date on it to formally close everything out. But Ms. Webb, I don't want to steal your thunder. You are more than welcome to join and do an overview at the 7 o'clock meeting.
Oh, at the next one? Oh, sure. It's whatever you guys want.
Okay. Well, then that would be lovely. If you're willing to do it, then we'll just turn the agenda back over to you for the recap at the 7 o'clock meeting.
Tonight, or... I'm sorry, I missed part of it.
Yes, it's tonight. Yes.
Okay, I actually do have a 6 o'clock meeting. A double vote. So I wouldn't be able to do it tonight.
I can do it. I can do it. No, it's fine. I can do the overview for the main meeting, if that's okay.
That works. It'll probably be around 7:30 by the time we get to it, if you are able to jump back on. But if not, we'll just turn the meeting over to Mr. Tenelli at that point to walk us through it.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your input regarding the audit. We'll continue through financial business, moving on to an emergency ordinance to amend FY 2025 to close out the ARPA funds, and that's Emergency Ordinance 10-2025. So Town Administrator, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an item that will move some funds to the ARPA so that we can close out the ARPA funds for the end of the year. What the first one was is in regards to the business nonprofit section that we're decreasing those. Those weren't spent. Increasing our food assistance, increasing the monitoring line item, decreasing the community initiatives line item for unfunded projects, moving $5,600 to Boswick Consulting, because we did do... That helps us to close out the end of the year. $11,000 to Low-Impact Design for Planning and Engineering. $10,456 for some police radios that were previously purchased with speed camera funds. We're moving those into this, because it helps us to spend it out now, because the other funds can be taken out later. $138,947 for the police vehicle replacements previously in speed camera that we're moving into ARPA. And then $500,000 for the capital project for the flood funding, which has not been billed to us by the county. So we may suggest that we would... We might do another amendment regarding that, because we've been waiting on that so that we can close it out. And there's $149 also for some other capital outlays for police radios that would be used from... We're suggesting to be used from ARPA. Once again, the issue is that we want to make sure that we spend out funds for items that were purchased in the fiscal year, I mean, before December 31st, 2024. And Mr. Tenelli, you can add on.
I mean, we had budget uses of funds, but it didn't materialize by December. But we have other areas where we could use this for that are underperforming right now. I mean, the main one is the capital outlay for the vehicles and for the police radios, because the speed camera revenues are falling behind budget right now, so it takes the pressure off of that. And all this leaves $500,000 as of December 31st, 2024, spent. So we can report that money has been spent by the deadline of December 31st and the final $500,000 that we obligate out to the flood project.
Which has to be out by 2026?
Yeah, by 2026.
And with the flood amount of $500,000, it just needed to be obligated before December 31st, 2024. So we really don't need to touch that, correct, as long as it's spent by the end of this year, December?
2026. You get two years.
Okay. So from that standpoint, I'm a little bit confused, because I thought by obligating it, it was already covered, but it's also listed in here.
I just wanted to formalize that.
Formalize it in this. We may ask you to change that in looking at the budget in another future meeting. But right now, we're formalizing it to say that this has been obligated for this expense. But you may... We see... We may do another budget. I'm just trying to let you know that there may be another budget update that we may... We may change... We may ask for a transfer from that.
Okay.
But it has been formally obligated, which is what's required by the state and the DBM people.
Even though it was already on the budget, and we talked about it, I'd just like to have it, again, you know, that's out there, that is obligated as of December 31st.
And then with respect to the speed camera funds, so are we thinking that we're going to end the year down? Or is it just down right now, given the transition with the vendor and some time that it took to involve the new owner who bought out, was it Conduit?
Medexa.
Yeah. Or Chief, are you thinking that we're going to end June 30th, 2025?
Well, Chief has to...
Lower than where we anticipated. And the only reason I'm asking is because if you guys feel confident that we'll recover the revenue, then I'd rather not obligate this. So that's why... That's where I'm going. I want to be transparent.
So, good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So unfortunately, yeah, it looks like this year, we will be under this year. So we're not looking to recover that as much as we would like to. So there were some hiccups with about 2,000 citations that was resolved, but that wouldn't bring us still back up to the level that we were anticipating this year.
That is helpful. And let me just apologize to the council members online. Did you have any questions regarding the proposed budget amendments, Councilmember Blunt?
Yeah, you can hear me good, right?
Yes.
I kind of was going to ask the same question. Was it because the cameras were down, that's why that's there?
So we did, as I stated earlier, we did have a hiccup with some cameras. So we lost about... We didn't lose, they just weren't processed, approximately 2,000 citations. That problem has been resolved, and we are expecting those revenues to come in once those citations are paid. But still, this year, we will be slightly under what we budgeted for.
I would say that the speed camera program's working to reduce speed. And I think that that's probably... You know, there's not as many people speeding on those streets. I mean, that would be... That's one of those good things, right, Chief?
Right. And it also weather plays a factor into it as well. So it ebbs and flows around this time of the year with the weather conditions.
I understand that. But if... Will we be able to recoup the money if, for some... For seen reason, they start speeding again?
Yes, ma'am. Once they fail to obey the posted speed limit, they will be held accountable.
Okay.
Councilmember Blunt, did that help?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember. Your audio went out. Could you please repeat that?
If someone else have a question pertaining to the speed cameras. I have two other questions that's on here. I can move on, or I can wait to see what anyone else has to say about the speed cameras.
Sure. Councilmember McBride, I want to give you a chance to. Did you have any questions on this portion?
Not really. I mean, if we're going to be able to recoup some of that money, I mean, it's fine, but if not, we got to find another way.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember or in the room, any other questions before we move on? Councilmember Dixon or Brown?
Okay. Because mine was around... About $500,000 when it had to be spent, so that was already answered.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Blunt, back to you.
Okay, on the additional $200,000 for food, are we anticipating more people to or planning something else different for an additional $20,000? And for the other unfunded projects, those community initiative? Do we already have those community initiatives lined up? Or because the $84,000 had to come from somewhere, and of additional $20,000, that's the only thing?
So Councilmember, that $20,000 was already spent in regards to the holiday food distributions and some of the gift cards for seniors. We use those. We use those funds, and we use ARPA funds to cover those additional for this year. So that's what we're... Because they were expended before December 31st, 2024. We were able to put those funds in there. And then the decrease to community initiatives, that's sort of the same. That's the... You know, we did not spend $84,000 for community initiatives, but we did spend more on food assistance. And then we spent some more in those other line items, because they all fell in that December 31 timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the questions, Councilmember Blunt. So if there are no other questions, just looking online and in the room. Okay, so I think we've satisfied all the questions and have a good plan for moving forward. And this is also on the 7:00 PM meeting, so that we can take a formal vote, since it is a financial matter. The next item under financial business is the FY 2026 budget overview. Yay, we're starting earlier. Mr. Tenelli? It's a budget party. Party pooper.
Sorry. 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 Sorry for using the Lord's name today. Okay. The... So tonight, we're going to talk about some of the budget assumptions, the fund balance trends, and the revenue options that we've got that we may ask you to look at, and then some of the other needs as we move forward. The budget assumptions this year is that we're going to try to look for... Look at COLA and Merit. Oh, thank you. COLA and Merit. And we're going to determine what those numbers are going to be, because we're still working through the budget. The first round that we've kind of come up with, there's about $1 million of needs that we've identified that would be over budget, a million, million, 1.2-ish. But so we're going to, Vito, myself, Chief Met today, to look at some of those options. And we're going to continue to meet with the leadership team to kind of go through that, so that by the... And we're going to continue to meet with the leadership team to kind of go through that so that by the time we see you on the eighteenth, you will have a little bit clearer, especially when we're talking to council about your budget this year. So one of those is COLA and merit and in some of the ways that if we look at our current number of employees, it would be about, it's about two hundred thousand dollars for about, for COLA. And then we're also experiencing some, some higher than anticipated cost with health insurance, like everyone knows. The last few years, we've gone up between five and six percent each year and we're budgeting this year for about five percent. So those are some things that are the compensation, you know, because people don't really think of health insurance as part of compensation. But one of the things that we're working with our H R partner once that's on tonight is to kind of show people what a benefits letter looks like and how much your health insurance is part of your compensation. And so we have never really added that, but that that is a huge compensation portion. Okay, next, capital projects. The town is looking at spending towards the earmark for the trade school, utilizing some of the bond bill funding for the construction of Town Hall. More of that will be spent in FY twenty six than it will be sent in FY twenty five. We are probably going to spend about seventy five thousand in twenty five, and if we do, it would be at the very end of the fiscal year. So I'm pretty much anticipating that most of the capital money will be spent in twenty six because the actual study itself will not be done until June, July. So that's the issue there. C D B G funding for streets and sidewalks, we're doing the bid now, but that will probably actually might show up in your budget in twenty six because it'll be in June. Last time we had a transfer from fund balance of about seven oh eight, but that's an old number. What we might need is that kind of money this year. If we decide to do everything, but we're gonna look really hard, we're gonna scrub the budget, we're gonna turn over cushions and we're gonna do anything we can to use coupons, whatever it takes to try to make that work. So fund balanced transfers, just to kind of let you know where we were in the past. You know, we've moved up rapidly and this is a, this shows that we've gone up from being a little bit at six point five million dollar budget in FY eighteen to doubling that to about twelve million, that's almost thirteen million dollars. And that's what we're estimating this year. You're gonna be at a thirteen million dollar budget, which is a big change for the town in a very short amount of time, especially with the initiation of ARPA. As Vito likes to say, same heaven, same everything. But I would, what I also say is that we're doing a lot more than we did in the past. And so that actually has, you know, scale costs. Some of the revenue items that we're asking look to look at is that, you know, we're gonna look at the assessed valuations and previous income tax estimates so that we can give you the best analysis of where we are with assessed evaluations for home and that for, you know, for houses and real estate. And then we can also let you know where we think we're gonna be with the, we'll know income tax by February, late February, correct, or early March?
Early March and one of the assessment, the real estate assessments by.
Yeah, see.
We'll know more about the the income tax projections in March and the real estate assessments for the major part, the main part of our revenues, we will know by this Friday.
It's a Valentine's Day surprise. Sorry, the other needs, which are the public safety and vehicle recurring leases. We have put that in there and, you know, scroll down, yeah, is about two hundred thousand dollars. Leaps funding for twenty seven, which will be just as far as trying, in twenty six, we would need to fund a study, which is about twenty, about twenty five to, it was twenty five to thirty thousand dollars. That was what they told us last time. Public rental, rental space, if we wanted to kind of, we're strapped in space right now. We had that as a last year need as a recurring cost. Town Hall construction, I always have T P D because that is a bonding issue that we need to start to figure out. And then expansion of community programming. I know that last year council really wanted to do youth sports and I know it's something, it's not, this is not in order of any order, it's just these are all the needs that were out there from last year that we just wanted to re-put together. The last, the last slide is the next steps, which I think you're all familiar with. We're gonna have budget sessions throughout March and to May. Our next session is actually February eighteenth, which is the council, which will kind of go through your budget and then we'll also go through those initial revenues. The budget ordinance will first be read in April. We'll start to look at if there's any changes to real estate taxes in April and May so that those would have to be noticed. The tax rate hearing would be the April fourteenth or May twelve. And then a final budget session has been scheduled for April twenty ninth with an adoption on May twelfth or a final adoption on May ninth, if you, if we, if we have to perseverate. June ninth, sorry, June ninth, excuse me, May twelfth and June ninth. Thank you for that correction, Councilwoman. And that's what we've got.
Great, thank you for that overview and it's really helpful to understand where things are lining up in terms of potential deficits. I think that we have to really have those tough conversations when we talk about the budget and really prioritize because we're not in a position to say yes to everything and knowing that we're already looking at a million. But there's all these asks that will pile on. We just have to have those tough conversations and be flexible. Some things are gonna have to be given up if other things are expected or anticipated. So I think that's gonna be a huge conversation as we start getting into our budget work sessions in the next couple of weeks and months. So I'll just leave that there. But council, any questions or comments regarding the overview, Councilmember Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a quick question. With this, it says this year women require a larger transfer from the fund balance due to a downfall in public safety, but is that also because of ARPA as well?
Yes, that's. I had actually had it open. I can't believe it. Yes, that is exactly, that is, you kind of hit the, 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 right on the nose because ARPA in some ways helped us to fund a lot of our public safety and a lot of our COLAs and everything like that. So we've built a base that had ARPA built into it. Now this year, the general fund is going to have to assume all of the things that we use ARPA for. So we've been able to, we didn't write off as much in twenty five to ARPA for salaries, but in twenty four, we did. So that's that transition issue that we're transitioning off of ARPA.
So Councilmember Brown, to that point, when we, I think it was FY twenty four, we decided to give increases to public safety salaries and ARPA covered it that year, but that's not there. So now that has to come from the operating fund just to sustain, sustain those salaries and also look at merit and COLA increases. So that definitely is gonna have a direct budget impact on top of the request for the items listed here. I think that was in the other page of the, yeah, under the vehicles, the recurring leases, rental space, leaps, Town Hall, bonding and construction. So we really have to have some serious conversations. And then also knowing it's not just at the municipal level, but the state is also having to have some tough conversations and they're facing a two billion dollar deficit. So we just have to be transparent and honest about this being a tough situation to navigate. And then the other piece of it is there were federal grants and funds available previously that we may not be able to be relying upon to help us out. And so that's where we need the directors to really come to the table, trying to help us solve this and get the best scenario that we can for our residents. So again, thank you for starting the conversations early. I think the finance party has just gone south on that note, but we have to talk about it. We have to work through it. So appreciate you as the leadership team already starting to have these conversations and help us come up with some solutions. Councilmember Blunt?
Okay, okay, I'm looking at the, where it says other needs. On here I see leaps, the study, study fee, so you have to pay a study fee for leaps?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman, we have to, if we do want to look at leaps, you're gonna have to re-study our, wow, I feel like I'm talking. I don't know why, okay. Because I'm like, if I don't press it. Okay, can you hear me now? So Councilwoman, so we have to pay a fee in order to get an updated, an updated, so sorry, updated amount for leaps. And we'd have to, if we decide to go into leaps, we'd have to spend some, some money for an application fee. So the total is thirty five thousand if after we get the, after we get the amended, you know, plan, extrareal study, then we would pay, I think, additional ten thousand to join leaps. So that's why it's a total of thirty five in this fiscal.
To pay it this fiscal for next fiscal?
Okay, and hopefully we have some more money with speed cameras. Hopefully not, but I'm just saying. But another question, with the expansion of the, of the community program, can you explain that?
So last year when we came to council and we did the last year's budget, there was an interest in doing some more community sports or expanding some of our programming in general. Last, with every year, things get a little bit more expensive. I knew that for the Independence Day celebration, we might, we might have like a ten percent, about ten percent cost raised between this year and next year. We're just doing more, I would say, than we've done when I first came here and things just cost a little bit more. So I would say thirty thousand dollars is a very conservative estimate. And if that, and if the council wants to add maybe one or two more items or want to add the sports, that's what that thirty thousand dollars really is, if that makes sense. There was a conversation last year about the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, so Councilmember, yeah, we were looking to try to restart the Boys and Girls Club for Bladensburg. Just given the importance of giving them something positive to do and we have a couple of coaches interested along with the community, Bladensburg Community Center partnering with us. So we couldn't get it off the ground by the end of twenty twenty four. So we'd be looking to do that sometime this year with Councilmember Dixon and myself.
With, okay, when you said Boys and Girls, I know that from there, but when you said Sports, I didn't, I didn't put the two together.
No problem. Yeah, no problem at all. All right, any other questions or comments before we move to the next item? Okay, looking at the time, six twenty two already. So we're now into new business and this is where we want to begin with appointments first for the Board of Supervisors of Elections and then secondarily the Ethics Commission. So we'll turn it over to the clerk.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So at the last council meeting, we made a recommendation that I should interview all the new ethics or B O S E appointees. So in front of you tonight is Resolution fourteen, which has reappointments for the Board of Supervisors of Election. All three candidates were previously on the Board of Supervisors of Election and have been longtime residents. Resolution fifteen is a recommendation for four new appointees for the Ethics Commission. I did have a chance to interview each and every one of the the new appointees, asked them eight questions and also created a new process for interviewing all new appointees to these, both of these boards. So included there, you will see the process that I used, the questions that I asked them and also the recommendation for the four new appointees. All of them have been, some of them are new residents, some have been long-term residents. All of them have different interests in why they want to be in the Ethics Commission, but pretty much everybody is, wants to serve the community and be part of this commission and, you know, just to help out the community. Again, there's three recommendations that I've added to this for the council to decide on tonight. You can decide to appoint all four of the new appointees. You can decide because of the fact that it should be probably an odd number just in case of voting, you know, so you guys can do, vote for three of the new appointees and, you know, pretty much have an alternate if you guys decide to. In case something happens to one of the three, one of them can, you know, jump in at that time, or you can decide not to appoint anybody tonight. The only one that has to be appointed tonight is the three for the Board of Supervisors of Election because of the town ordinance that it has, they have to be appointed before February twenty eighth because of the election.
Thank you for that overview, Madam Clerk. And so the, the individuals listed, as was stated, are current volunteers who have been a part of the Board of Election Supervisors. So starting there, are there any questions from the council regarding the individuals named there? Okay, Councilmember McBride, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. And then I know it is best to have an odd number, not four people in the case of the Ethics Commission. And so would propose that we proceed with installing or appointing three individuals and then have an alternate if for some reason someone has to resign or can't participate. In terms of being an alternate, Madam Clerk, you would just let them know whoever that individual is, that they were selected as an alternate and make it clear that if someone resigns or can't perform their duties, that they would be asked to step in. Is that what the process would be?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And so with the council, again, there's four individuals here and we would just need to identify the three that we would be proposing. And do we need to go into the names of the individuals now so that we're clear for the seven o'clock meeting? Because I mean, from my standpoint, I think I could, what I would be comfortable with is Mister Wildheart, Mister Davis and Mister Marshall and then making Mister Newsome an alternate. But I'm open to other input from the council in case you have other ideas. And I'm looking to the virtual screen, Councilmember Blunt and Councilmember McBride.
Do any one of us or the councilmembers know these people personally to make a decision at this time? Or we just reading what we have here and or having the clerk to give, give, give her advice on the ones that she can review? Because I don't know any of them, so I wouldn't know who's who or whatever, feel comfortable saying anything.
Yeah, and you raise a good point, which is why I was thinking the three that I named have been involved in various community activities. So I know and have encountered them, whereas the one I recommended as an alternate is not known to any of us from my, you know, asking other council members. And so I do think it would give that individual an opportunity to get out, get involved, to see and interact with the community more before taking on such an important role on that Ethics Commission. Because it's not just the complaints, if there's a complaint about the council, it could be about a business. If it's an ethics violation, we need someone who's more familiar with the community to be able to weigh into those matters. And if necessary, work with our attorney to resolve them. So from that standpoint, I just don't feel comfortable appointing someone to that important commission that I don't know or haven't seen serving or participating in the community. So I just put forth my thought, but you know, tell me what you think in Councilmember McBride and then I'll come back to the council members in the room.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For me, I would like to, do we get to meet these people?
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, we didn't ask them to come to this meeting. I think that would be something that you could ask, but sometimes you, some councils, can you not hear me?
It might be that microphone. Give us one second, we're gonna switch.
Can you hear me now, Councilwoman? Okay, can you guys better hear me? We didn't ask them to come to the meetings. What, in other places that I've worked, there's sometimes that they would, you know, people would be asked to come to the meeting and appear if they know they're going to be appointed. We did not do that in this case. So, I mean, I think the thing about it is that Miss, and I will let Miss, Miss Watson kind of talk about her interviews because she did do extensive interviews with each one of these candidates so that the council could kind of get to know. And that's why the notes are in there that she kind of put down the highlights because she has, she did do a lot of work on this. I just want to kind of give her her roses for that because she did call each one of these people, talk to them for about a half an hour piece, is my understanding. So Miss, Miss Watson?
Yes, that's correct. I spoke to each and every one of the new appointees. I create, again, if you see the process here, I created the, the initial interviews, post-interviews and then I came up with eight questions to ask them, basically to.
And then I came up with eight questions to ask them, basically to kind of get a feel for how long they've been a resident, what, you know, why they want to serve as, on the Ethics Commission, do they have any experience working on the Ethics Commission? Are they comfortable making ethical decisions? You know, any volunteer experience? Are they able to commit to the role? Um, and how, you know, how would they handle a conflict of interest? And also what, how would they handle, um, a decision that needs to be made on the Ethics Commission that might affect their, you know, their personal view or something that might affect them personally? So again, I'm comfortable with all the candidates. However, I do feel like the ones that have been here for many years do have more experience with the town. Each of the, um, residents have discussed, you know, talked about different events that they've been part of, um, different programs that they, they enjoyed and why they are, you know, part of the community, why they want to, um, sit on this Ethics Commission. Um, one of our, um, appointees has been a resident for twenty-six years and volunteered to how many different, um, events and helped out at different things when he was a kid and just, you know, talked about how his grandfather's also helped out, you know? So the, the three that the mayor did mention did talk about different events that they were talking about. Not saying that, um, Mr. Newsom couldn't do it. I think he, you know, he has a lot of experience with community and civic engagement. But, um, when it comes to, if, if I would make a recognition, when it comes to people who have been in, um, involved in the residence and coming to community events and being part of different, um, activities, the three residents who've been here, the amount of years they have, have been part of different things. So that's just based on what I, I read. But again, I think all four could do the job, but if I had to pick, I would pick the same three.
And Councilmember Blunt, would you be more comfortable if we asked the candidates to attend the, um, March meeting? We don't have to appoint them tonight. So would that be better if they could appear? Just say a little bit about themselves at the March meeting before we formally appoint them. Would that be beneficial?
Yeah, because, um, even, and I know, even though we can know people because they attended program or whatever, but to see them and hear them speak, I, I think that would be better, like, um, Councilmember McBride said. We, if we can meet them, just talk a few seconds. Yeah, cause I don't feel comfortable making a decision because they work here or any one of them worked here or have volunteered for anything, making a decision based on that. I don't feel comfortable, but you know, but again, you, you wouldn't need my, my vote, but I don't feel comfortable that way. But I will feel comfortable just talking. Saying it that way, but that's just, again, that's just my opinion. Um, that's just my opinion, but at this point, we need someone.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. I do want to acknowledge though, that, that this is something that would be a, a difference. Uh, previously, even before any of us were on the council and when Councilmember Brown was on before, it was the same application process. There may or may not have been an interview, but they didn't necessarily meet the council prior to. So I do want to acknowledge that it has worked just fine having the regular process through. But again, if, if that is the desire of the council, we can ask them if you're okay to come to the March meeting and just say a little bit about themselves at the work session. And then in the seven o'clock meeting, have it on the agenda to appoint them if, if the council is comfortable. Would that work?
I would go with the will of, the will of the council, I mean, at that point. So I mean, I don't want to drag anything on. If it's worked that way, it's fine with me, but that's just, you know, my opinion.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Brown, did you have a comment or question? Okay, all right. So from the council, just let me know, what is the will of the council to ask them to come in March? I'm here, extending a head nod, yes.
I think it will be good for them to come. At least they'll get to meet the council. You know, at, at this point, yeah, at least they'll get to meet the council. And, and, and I would want to be in person if I was going to be appointed to, to something, to a board or something, so. Yeah, but I think, thank you, uh, Ms. Regine for all the work that she did in vetting them.
Okay, so Councilmember Blunt, McBride, and Dixon, so we'll just plan to invite them to the March meeting if that's all right. Okay, Councilmember Dixon, is that good? Okay, all right, thank you.
So Mayor, on the, on the agenda, you're going to table that resolution and then we'll put it back for the next meeting?
Perfect, yes. And then, but we'll continue with the Board of Supervisors of Election appointments. Okay, and then, uh, looking at item B, Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-five, uh, we'll turn it back over to the Town Administrator.
So since I have a limited amount of time, this is the, the G three grant, which is green. Uh, I always get it backwards, Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns. Um, what we're doing is we're working on an application for this. It's due in early March. I met with EcoSite last week to, well, was it last week? Yeah, so it was last week, to go through some opportunities that would work for a Green Street. And we're looking at, um, fifty-seventh Avenue and Emerson, uh, for our raised sidewalk because, um, so that we can look at some opportunities with, um, leveraging the amount of traffic and the schools in that location. Um, so that we can do a, um, a, a paved sidewalk. The other, um, places that we looked at, um, were Quincy, the Quincy Road. But it's, since it is a state road, uh, we've been told that when we apply for these, these funds, because it's only a limited amount of funds, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they don't meet state highway standards. And they're very difficult to use this grant for state highways. So I am going to check in on our meeting to see if in the future we can use maybe even planning dollars instead for the state highway road. Because that was actually my number one choice, was trying to make the, to get rid of those barriers that we have going down the street and doing some boxes so that, so that it was more attractive, um, on the street. But that was what I was told by the grantor. So we will submit our grant on time and this is a resolution of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Town Administrator. Are there any questions about the G three grant program? Appreciate you putting in the work to do it. And it's disappointing, we can't apply it to the S H A, uh, area along Quincy because it definitely is needed to make that look more visually appealing. But again, uh, bringing it up to the District Three engineer, I think is still a good idea just to see if they would be able to work with us on that. All right, so we'll move on to item C, Resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, and it's back to you, Madam Town Administrator.
Yeah, this is a grant for, um, another, this is another grant for transportation that we're going to be working with the Port Towns on. Um, I actually heard about this on the COG meeting, which see, it's two things in one, that I went to a COG meeting and then I heard about a grant. And, um, we are able to apply underneath the county because we are not a primary on the COG grant team, I mean, on the COG transportation. Um, so we, the county has allowed us to apply. And so they're going to be giving us a letter of support, which we have to draft for them for the Port Towns. But it will be a study either on streetscape. Uh, remember, uh, at the last Port Towns meeting, we discussed maybe unifying what the Port Towns look like as far as some signage and streetscape and things like that. So it'll be a joint project on that, or it'll be a joint traffic project to look at intersections that cross, like the Peace Cross in regards to that. So we're working through that issue and I'm going to be leaning on Rob because he's a much better writer on these than I am. So Rob and I are going to work through this one and get this in. So that's what that one is. And of all the Port Towns will do a, um, a subsequent resolution.
Perfect, and you can do either or both? And is the goal to do both the, uh, application for the eighty K in technical assistance and then the hundred thousand for design?
Yes, that is the, that is the, um, that is the goal, is to do it for both.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council regarding this program? Sorry, I gotta put Zoom back up so I make sure I don't miss Councilmember Blunt and McBride. Okay, you guys are good. Okay, all right, so we will keep moving to, uh, item D, approval for a contract. Oh my gosh, it's been a long time coming for HR consulting.
It's been a long time, uh, but I have to say that this one was done through the persistence of Ms. Watson and keeping this moving because she, as many times as I've gone, eh, maybe this one, eh, maybe that one. She's come back to me and said, Michelle, are we gonna do this? And I'm like, yeah, yeah, let's do this. So she's, she's kept it going. So the, the recommendation is Ramos, um, Ramos Consult, HR Consulting. They're a firm that's located out of the West Coast, but they actually have some offices here on the East Coast. It'll be pretty much virtual, but they will come in to help us do the kickoff of this. Um, their rate is very affordable compared to some of the other ones that we looked at. And I think from Vito's standpoint, it was price that, that, uh, that impressed him. But at the same time, we were very impressed by their, their knowledge, um, of, uh, local government, HR. And we really feel like they will probably do, um, a pretty, a pretty competitive job and provide us with some, um, HR, some things that we were doing. Uh, Chief, uh, Collington was also on these calls and I think they did answer some of his questions regarding police, um, police procedures. And I think that we all kind of came together to do that. Um, but I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that I check in with the team and see if there's anybody else who has any comments. But I do fully, um, recommend, uh, this firm. We did interview a total of eight firms and we did a lot of calls with people. So that's our, that's the, that's my story. But Chief, um, Regine, anybody else have anything to add?
I just wanted to add that I do feel comfortable with HR, Ramos, HR Consulting. They have over twenty years of experience or combined between the two consultants on the firm. And I think even though that they're online and they're not here, they have worked out. They said they'll be there two to three times a year, you know, to support us at a reasonable rate. So they can help us out with our benefits, they're going to help us out with our, um, policies and procedures. So again, I'm comfortable on the people that we've, we've interviewed so many people many times to come up with this, this. And I think the leadership team is probably happy and excited to, to get this going.
That's great. Chief, anything to add?
Well, I, I agree with, with, uh, Regine and Ms. Michelle said. Uh, I, I, my questions were, we're dealing with internal affairs, sensitive reports and handling them and, uh, protecting them by law. Uh, we, we still fall, have to fall under the state of Maryland. So I just wanted to gauge their, um, experience in dealing with law enforcement agencies, handling internal affairs files and confidential files, how would they secure them? So they satisfied those questions, so I was good.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Tenelli, anything else you'd like to add?
Any help is much appreciated. So, I mean, it's, um, yeah, we've been talking about this, Mayor, for what, three years, four years maybe now? Um, so it's nice that we have the, you know, the, you know, the resources now to go out and get it. Because I mean, as we're expanding and we have expanded, you know, it's, we have that much more need with the human resources. So, but with this firm, we talked to them and very comfortable with them. And it wasn't just the price, it was just, you know, what they offered to do, so.
From Mr. Tenelli, well, I appreciate you all taking the time to go through interviewing the eight firms and, um, come up with a recommendation. I know just personally, I think it's important that we elevate how we're providing services to our staff and also how we educate and inform them. And so Vito's heard me say this for like seven years at least. The fact is, at the end of the year, we need to be providing benefit statements to our staff so they know you don't just get a paycheck from here, but here's the value of how the town is investing in you and how that affects your total compensation. As you're thinking about retention, people can be baited away with a salary. But if they realize that salary is only one piece of their compensation and the town's putting X number of thousands additionally into that, plus professional development, plus all these other things. It's our job to communicate. We can't just assume that staff know it. And then similarly, educating them about employee benefits, health is a concern across the board. I don't care what department you work in. And so having a professional open house where they can be here to support the vendors. So Vito doesn't have to call Care First and MetLife Dental and all the rest of them. But having this point of contact who can have those folks come out, educate our staff about it, about the wellness benefits that can help them. So we have healthy and fit police officers who are taking advantage of the, um, Care First program where you can have a coach who helps you with your weight loss and your fitness to keep you encouraged along the way. Or maybe it's public works because they have to do more physical activity, or just anyone who may be sedentary and shouldn't be sitting all day and thinking about how they take their fifteen-minute breaks and go outside and utilize the track, um, the little walk-in park. So I mean, it's, we have a job to make sure we're taking care of our people. And, you know, there's this label on the inside of very delicate, uh, clothing and dresses that says, treat this fabric with care. But I think we need to treat our people with care. So this goes a long way in helping us to do that very thing. So any comments or questions from the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, how long is the contract with Ramos?
It's a two-year contract with a possible one-year extension.
Is that right? I thought it was three and two.
It's two.
Two and one, we, we, we asked them, I think that in their proposal, they asked for a three and we negotiated down to a two and one. Because what we wanted to be able to do is to show you within a couple of years, if we don't need it, that we have an option to get out of it. Like if we're, if we want to hire a person, like I think the thing about it is that we'd hope one day is that we could hire someone. So we did a two and one so that we could be able to do that, where they would kind of have a transition year with a consultant.
Have they worked with other municipalities before?
And, um, it was mentioned that they're based in California. A lot of the references are for, um, counties in California or cities in California. I did see one community on the West Coast and that they have someone in North Carolina, I think it was, who can provide services here. So at least there's someone on this side of the country that if we need them in person, they can get to us. All right, so with that, I know we're down to fourteen minutes and we still have twenty-five minutes worth of topics, so.
I've asked for Jared, he's been off for a long time.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Blunt.
With the agent, with, with, with the company, do, um, so the staff and employees would be able to talk with them? Of course confidentially, but would they be able to call them or, or, would we get to know how that worked? Is there a book or some type of manual to say, or what they do and how they do? If an employee have a problem, they can give them a call? How does that whole thing work or?
Yes, Councilmember, one member, um, uh, there is actually a way that they can confidentially call the, um, HR, the HR person. What they actually will have is a, one, a confidential email and also a confidential phone line that they can call in for issues. And they can help to also deal with issues regarding healthcare and things like that. So that if they're, that we can help to, that they'll help us to be better service people. But there'll, there'll be now an HR, um, resource email that people can reach out to and also a phone number. So they'll give us a person that that can be, that, that so if they send an email or they do a call, that they'd be called back in a certain amount of time. Does that make sense?
There's no manual that we can look at?
They will be, well, actually they'll be helping us with our HR manuals so that our HR manual will, that will now include their, the information for that so that they can have, so that they will be helping us to make sure that we have checks and balances. Is that, because that's where we, what they're going to do is start to build our infrastructure so that we can actually utilize it as we move on. So they will, there will be a way for employees to be able to confidentially. So they're going to, that's one of the first things they're going to be doing, is working through our manual to update it and to make sure that employees do have that opportunity. So they don't necessarily have to call, it's the Town Administrator, but to give them that kind of resource. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, uh, thank you for that.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Blunt. Yes. Correct, yes. All right, so with that, um, if the council is amenable, we'll move to the trade school updates since we have Mr. Hawkins with us online. And then we may have to just forego the rest of the items since they're already on the seven o'clock meeting. Is that okay? Uh, because we're coming up on six forty-nine. Okay. So Mr. Hawkins is here with us, our economic development consultant, and we'll turn it over to you and the Town Administrator for a trade school update.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, and good to see you all. Uh, good after, well, good evening, everyone. Want to give a quick update on the, uh, trade school progress. Uh, as you know, a few fiscal years ago, uh, the town Bladensburg was awarded a million-dollar earmark from, uh, the Prince George's, a federal delegation that included Senator Cardin, Congressman Brown, uh, Senator Van Hollen and a few others. Uh, so where things stand right now, we've been having bi-weekly meetings with employee Prince Georges. Uh, they're headed out, they're executive. Uh, they're headed out, their executive director is Walter Simmons. Uh, we meet biweekly to uh talk about progress. Uh, and the reason why the partnership came about, uh, we have a relationship with Walter. Uh, Employee Prince Georges handles workforce development. Uh, from a distance, he knew that uh we uh got the earmark and uh so things just aligned. We had a conversation over the summer, uh, things just aligned and uh, we've identified the International School and we're having some conversation about what a a build out and what uh uh the trade school having a presence there would look like. Uh, also, there has been some conversation about uh partnering and utilizing the volunteer fire department. Uh, and then providing uh uh I guess fire, fire firefighter training uh to uh residents of, well, Bladensburg, Port Towns, we're still trying to iron that out. Uh, the ha- I will say that there has been some conversation about putting uh the the trade school at the old uh Crossroads uh location. While, you know, I I'll say that million dollars won't be able to buy that land. And there, there, then there comes a question of maximizing the value of that. I think that trade, that uh the Crossroads property is, you know, being offered at about a few million dollars, maybe even five million dollars. So just from a value standpoint, it makes more sense to partner with the entity, get in someone's building and move forward in that direction. Going back to the International School, uh Walter is leading that conversation. Uh, our understanding, there will be a time when we meet with the school system and really start to iron things out. There was a question from the school system, uh, I guess one of the hurdles, one of the things that they want to figure out is oh, what does safety or provide some type of barrier between the trade school participants and the actual uh kids going to the school, what that would look like? Uh, which to me is pretty promising, because either through retrofits or some type of staggering the schedule or making sure the trade school is open when the kids are out of school, so we we can figure that out. So that was the main concern they had so far. I think we can work that out. I think we're making some good progress. Uh, another challenge that we're going to have to overcome is, uh, quite honestly, the new administration doing what they're doing, there is a level of uncertainty around grants and some of this uh funding that's been allocated uh in the uh from the past prior administrations, prior congresses. I have been in contact with, uh, uh, they say that we're good. Oh, quite honestly, I I I want to, that was a few weeks ago, I want to follow up with them again to make sure that that's the case, uh, just due to the volatile nature of this administration. Uh, so we're making progress. Uh, I had a uh conversation with the CEO of Ernest Mayer, he's interested, he provided, we're going to sit down and talk. He provided some uh a quick, you know, overview of some resources or what, you know, potential partnership could look like. Uh, so we're making progress on it and uh we, but we still have a lot of work to do and some things to overcome.
And then just one addition, we did, um, I did share with Walter that the Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department is also willing to let us use the training center to get the training off the ground and then also potentially help with education in terms of the um firefighter cadet program. And more specifically, this cadet program is already being offered in a couple of Prince Georges County high schools. And so the difference is, we would be offering the training outside of the school setting, using our local fire department and then also partnering with them, because currently, for example, at Flowers High School, they use the volunteers to teach the training, so these folks are already certified and would be a, an easier path to getting this pilot program off the ground. So um, that's all I had to add, Town Administrator. Okay.
I I wanted to let the council members ask questions.
Yeah, so Mr. Hawkins, thank you for um joining us and giving this update. We appreciate you being on. If there are no other questions, oh, Councilmember Blunt.
Hi, um, of course, I was trolling Facebook and I came with, cause everyone know Trade Runway and Ward Eight. They have a program in DC, um, that there's the DMV area, build a trade school in the Sum's Building. Um, I think it might be some, some others might eat, so others may eat. Where they offering trades to the DMV for HVAC, building maintenance, medical tech. I wondered if we can reach out to them, to some of their um trainees to see, are they willing to come over to our location and offer the same thing? They might be even getting a grant, but we might not have to pay, I'm not sure. But would there be a problem to check into this program that's already and just started in DC? And it's called, it's a trade school in DMV area, that's teaching trades, not only in, but it's teaching everything. The HVAC, building maintenance, just to reach out to them and see what all they offer and can they come over to us?
Yes, Councilmember, I'm happy to reach out. Uh, I I I do know that Walter with Employee Prince Georges, he, you know, has a pretty strong network of people. I'm pretty sure he knows of what you're talking about, and so I can run that past him. Also, I wanted to highlight, I I I meant to mention it earlier, that uh already working with Walter, uh, I I'm not, I'm kind of fuzzy on the specifics, but he wrote us into a grant uh that should be bringing in a little bit more funding for uh this trade school, so uh, we're uh making some progress, but like I said, we have some uh some more things to overcome. But uh, Councilmember, I'll I'll talk with Walter and then we'll we'll.
I'll send you the information so we can get it into his hands. I mean, we need all, we need all guys.
Yeah, and Councilmember Blunt, to your point, that's one of the future objectives for it. We just wanted to pilot one program initially, but the HVAC, the masonry, the electrician, plumbing, all of those are things that we've talked about with our businesses, because they're right here in the Bladensburg Industrial Park and they need this next generation of workers. And so they're willing to help us, but we just have to start, you know, small, so that we can scale up to that. So it is on our minds to be thinking about those additional programs. So the fact that you brought this other resource that we can look into and potentially uh connect with is perfect. So thank you for that suggestion.
I didn't know we were just looking for one resource um at a time. I thought it was a trade school for everything, not just fire department.
That's correct. That's what I was just saying. Maybe I wasn't clear. However, when we talked about this from the inception, the goal was to get into the specific trades as far as electrical work, plumbing work, um, things regarding masonry and cement work. We want to be broad HVAC, that that is the goal. However, we just needed to start with a pilot program that we could easily get off the ground quickly. And this cadet program, the curriculum is already there, so we just wanted to start with that and then expand it once we have some successes with it. So this resource that you're sharing can help us so we can be prepared to expand and get those other courses together. It's just, we can't do ten right out the gate. We don't have the resources for that. And to uh Mr. Hawkins' point, um, Walter with Employee Prince Georges has already stood up some schools in Prince Georges County. So he's got the resources from the county perspective that can help us expedite this as we get going. So we're all on the same page in terms of wanting to see this expand beyond, not just, you know, public safety, but into those more uh traditional trades. Does that make sense?
Yes, because DMV has District Maryland and Virginia, so if you're talking about grants, that grants cover every.
Right.
We might not have to do, that's all I'm saying, but I will check for it personally. And also I'll send it to you, because just one program, if we can have two of you not paying for it, and we do have the school, there is space for more than just one program. Even if you move the fire department over to the fire department and then use the school, as you say, we we do have that school. Then we can do another trade there. I don't see why we have to just do one. We have a million dollars.
Right, but we also have to make sure we have the staff to support it. That's where we're going. We just want to make sure we build it right. But agree a hundred percent with everything you said. Um, right now, I'm going to end the conversation here, so we can have a motion to adjourn, because it's almost time for the seven o'clock meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember, oh, Councilmember McBride. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. We'll be right back in one minute. Everybody, give us just one minute, okay?